Good afternoon. I'm going to call the monthly meeting of the Dyton Stormwater Committee to order. It is Wednesday, October 18th, 2023. It's 1:06 PM. We're in the upper level meeting room at the Old Town Hall. This is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for posting on YouTube. And we have a Zoom link. And Ahmet, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Attendance, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Phillips is here.
Caldonia.
Here.
Ferry.
Here.
President.
Mr. Woods nephew. Robert Woods is here. Nancy Gulat is here. Has anybody heard from Mr. Agia? He may come up later. It could be something. Okay. As is usual the case, I'm going to request a motion to take agenda item 5B Clearway Solar Arujio Farms out of order. They're a motion.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Caldonia.
Thank you.
Aye.
Vote unanimous. Mr. Cruz, would you like to come up to the podium and give us some kind of an update?
All right. Well, I'm happy to report that we're getting very close now. We've achieved, we've attained our mechanical completion certificate. We're working to get substantial completion now, which is, you know, finishing up all the little details that housekeeping has been taking care of. We're having winter rye seeded, if not the end of this week, early part of next week. They couldn't commit to either Friday or Monday, but they'll do it one of the two days, Lisa. People are supposed to send you an email back, so I'll be watching for that.
Yeah, they could just reply also if they want to get CC as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Definitely will. Ingrid has placed all three of their poles that they needed to. Well, actually, there's five total, but the three last ones by the road are in. The wire has been strung between them now, so we're ready for our interconnection there. We're preparing for a witness test. They scheduled it for November 25th. We're thinking that it might go earlier than that because we're they padded the schedule, I think, anticipating that we might need more time. So we're hoping that maybe we can get squeezed in a little quicker than that, but we'll be sure to let you know when we get the date for that. And we basically, right now, all we have is engineers and a couple of techs on site. And the commissioning is getting ready to start taking place, and so we can get ready for that witness test. That means that, and let me, let me, let me stress this. Since we're getting into the commissioning phase, we welcome you to come visit anytime. But now it's going to be hot, right? And so we want you to really be careful. If you come to visit, let us know. Don't get near any of the equipment while they're doing the commissioning stuff, you know. Now, the building inspector and every electable inspector, everybody just needs to come out. We'll make sure that it's dead so they can inspect everything they need to. But if you do come out while we're doing commissioning, that's probably the most dangerous part of one of these plants is when you're making it live. So just be aware of that, and we welcome you to come out. No problem for that, so.
Okay, and I'll make it known that if certainly if the Stormwater Committee is going out, we'll be in touch with you ahead of time. And I'll let Mike Mullin know if any town officials are interested that they've got to contact you first because it's live and it's dangerous, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the committee on the project?
Yes, so you're working on those basins anyway out now already?
Yes, so we're putting the infiltration trench in right now. Sorry, thank you for bringing that up. The infiltration trench is being installed right now, and it's, we're about two-thirds of the way around the road with that. And we've had Chris Ryan from Meridian out, make sure it's being installed correctly. And then the basins are functioning really well, and I think there's still one more outfall pipe that has to be installed in the farthest basin to the north, okay? Other than that, they're, they're doing really well and they're holding up, so we're, we're pleased.
So it's like halfway completed, the basin stuff, is it?
No, the basin stuff, I would say is about 90% completed. We have the one pipe that we need to install for the, to drain it.
The basins? Am I going to take it down? Not.
You and I can go out. All right.
So you think now's a good time or wait a little bit more?
Why don't you come next week? I think they'll be done. They'll be close to done anyway by that time, so.
Check with Lou next week and see if it's, I mean, hopefully we won't have pouring rain between now and then. But if he says now's a good time, we'll just do it.
Yeah, and maybe I can go at the same time because I'd like to see.
Yeah, we'll let you know what we find out.
Yeah.
So I had a question. Winter rye, so next spring, what's going to replace the winter rye?
At that point, they'll be putting down the permanent vegetation coverage or seeding. And I'm not sure what kind of grass that is supposed to be used for that. Lisa had recommended the rye for getting us through the
Right, right.
So that's why we're doing that, and then from there, I'm, you know, I'll have to get you back to that information. Right, I have it in my, in my truck out there. But I'm not sure what grass seed it will be. I'll get that now. Let me tell you.
Nancy, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Do, is there any like, I don't know, bond money or anything like that for inspections like the basins for them, for us?
What we can do, like, I think we need a final. So I will check with Mike, with Weston and Sampson.
That's what I was hoping you'd say.
Yeah, yeah. It's obviously got to be somebody of the caliber that Todd was, so this will be like a, when you tell us everything's done, it'll be like a final inspection. These basins have drained all along, so I don't anticipate we're going to have a problem with basins not draining. Lou, did you say there were five poles installed?
A total of five, yes ma'am. There's, so there's, there was the one, two, three back by the site itself, and then there was two more out on the road.
Okay.
By Arujio Farms.
Mr. Ferry, I'm really going to address this to Heather. If you're available for that site visit, is, I'd like you to come do site visits, completely note-taking, in artificial minutes. But if there is, and we don't vote and we don't discuss, and, and any other members of the Stormwater Committee that might want to attend that, just, we'll get, I'll get the word out to the whole committee. But the purpose is that we just have a record that the site visit was done, and I don't know, if somebody asked a question about something, it, the information was given. They aren't detailed. Again, they're notes, they're not minutes, but Mr. Ferry may have to lock the door for a little bit, okay? They, they don't usually take long. It's not like the initial pre-construction meeting or anything, okay? Wear sturdy shoes, all right, not sneakers. Mr. Ferry probably has got Claude Harper's he could lend you. And you'll, you'll be wearing a vest and a construction hat, which Mr. Ferry is going to supply. He's just, you know, he's not saying anything, so. So thank you, Mr. Ferry. Okay, so I'll notify the, the whole committee of the, of the visit, if it, when it's going to happen, whether it's next week or the week after. The other thing is too, Heather, these don't often, these don't happen very often. If we have one at a site visit, unless there are problems and we have to go back and do repeated site visits, but these are not on a regular basis, don't have to post them. Whatever. Anything else from the committee on, on Clearway Arujio? Mr. Christopher Lee, I'm, I'm going to ask that agenda eight be taken out of order. I have a motion to do that, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Woods.
Hi.
I vote unanimous. Mr. Christopher Lee, if you'd wait, please, Mr. Cruz, if you want to come to the podium. So at the last meeting, I reported I had picked up an envelope. It was upon the agenda at the last meeting because I hadn't even opened it, but I have it here now. And this is from Mr. Christopher Lee. It's a letter dated September the 12th. And Heather, I will give you all of this stuff because it will be part of the minutes of the attachment to the meeting. What is that?
Tape recorder.
Oh, 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 okay. All right. So just to mention that, that is, the meeting is being additionally taped recorded because Heather uses that when she sits down to do minutes. Because the, it doesn't always get on Zoom, and we don't know what happened to last month. It went into outer space, but anyhow, that's what that recording is for. So I'm going to read this letter from Mr. Christopher Lee dated September the 12th, addressed to the Dyton Stormwater Committee. Dear, dear Chairwoman Gulat, according to your comment to me at the August 16th, 2023 meeting, monthly Stormwater Committee meeting, I formally request that the Stormwater Committee minutes for the July 19th, 2023 meeting be formally amended to reflect an email complaint that I made via email to all Stormwater Committee members July 5th, 2023, 8:58 AM about concerns of stormwater at the Clearway Solar Project, 1422 Williams Street, Dyton, Mass. over 02715 on July 4th, 2023. And onto my property located at 1730 Wellington Street, Dyton, Mass. 02715. This event also resulted in subsequent basement flooding of my property located at 1730 Wellington Street, Dyton, Mass. 02715. While I'm reading this, I'm going to pass around the rest of the stuff that was in the envelope. There are photographs here. So if you just pass it around to the committee as, I'll keep reading this. And hold your questions on the photos until I get through this and ask for questions from the committee. I have attached a copy of the original email sent July 5th and provided pictures of basement flooding which has occurred in the northeast portion of my home closest to the runoff swale and retention basin following the storm. I have continued to have water ingress issues in the basement during the following storms, noting additional water ingress on July 15th, 17th, August 19, 25, and most recently on September the 11th. Please see the attached pictorial details as requested. Unfortunately, due to a work commitment, I will be out of town and not able to attend the September 20th meeting. For additional comments or questions, please feel free to reach out to me should you have any questions or require additional information. My contact information is noted below. I look forward to hearing back from you on this matter and working with the Stormwater Committee and site contractor Clearway to eliminate this issue and rectify any damages. The first paragraph relative to the minutes, having looked into this and checked the sources that I have, those minutes will not be amended.
Okay.
The storm, the date that you gave us as your complaint on July the 5th, from the time you first appeared, that's when your complaint began, on July the 5th. So all that previous discussion, that when you have come and talked about different things, that would have started the clock, okay? Let's see, all right, so the pictures and that is going around right now. I'm looking at the clock right now. I'll give you five minutes if you want to explain this, what's going around, or if you want to give us an update or any comments, then I'm going to ask the committee to weigh in if they have any questions, comments, whether about what you're going to say or what you see, what they see in the pictures or anything else, so go ahead, Mr.
So thanks for hearing me. I mean, basically, the situation is now that that swells there, there is water coming into my basement. It seems like every significant storm, it continues, and, you know, it wasn't having a problem, you know, prior to that swell happening, so, you know, I have some concerns and looking to get some assistance from, you know, we've talked about it already, from the stormwater, to help eliminate that problem. You know, I don't know if it's a design issue, if there's something else that could be done. Do I need to put a sump pump in my basement? Again, you know, anytime we have significant rain, which obviously we've had over the last couple of months, I'm getting water in my basement. I've already burned out a dehumidifier. You know, I'm running a fan down there. You know, I'm trying to eliminate the moisture in the mold the best I can, but you know, the water continues to come into my basement.
You said put a sump pump in again.
No, put a sump pump.
Oh, you said again.
No, I don't have a sump. I don't have a sump.
Okay.
But I have burned out a dehumidifier, basically, you know, I suck up the, the water with my shop vac, and then the dehumidifier is pretty much running 24/7 now.
Mr. Cruz, when was the swale constructed that he's talking about?
The swell adjacent to Mr. Christopher's property was installed May, I believe, May or June.
Okay.
Completed, I should say, by that time.
Yeah, it was beaten. It was definitely the dams weren't probably not in place yet, so that didn't flow anywhere.
You know, I'm sorry, I was referring to the rock dam and everything when I
Yeah, it's, so, yeah, the original swale was basically finished without the rock dam and the other features like that. That was late March, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Pillin would have inspected this. He was still on board then.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So you guys chatted with a resolution here or?
We really haven't resolved that issue yet, but wash pool, of course, and pressure wash the house and the roof and the concrete around the pool, and then the, the basement, we just, we haven't gotten around to discovering or finding the rest of it.
Okay.
I, I don't, you know, I don't know what the resolution is there, but
I'd be very surprised if water that would migrate from that swale that direction break through your house. I mean, yeah, it was, it does go on your corner. I mean, probably like you're always digging the past, and that's where the water's
I mean, it's happening right in that corner that's closest, you know, to, to the swale into the, to the construction.
The outflow of the swale could be
I mean, the, the, the outflow retention pond goes further down, and that floods on the bottom part of my property, which I don't really care. You know, that's the woods.
Just from getting it, that's all, and it's already going, then
But is that, you know, is that going into the ground? Is that going into the ground and, you know, and then raising the water, you know, table, my wells there, you know, now I think about it too, my wells in close proximity to that as well. That's in that back corner as well, you know, no, no pun intended, but you know, should I be concerned about my well and potential contaminants?
Does anyone on the committee have questions about the pictures they looked at?
Well, I have a comment.
Yeah, we have questions or comments.
So there wouldn't be any contaminants for your well, but but it also the Coal River is there, I mean.
That's the headwaters of the Coal River, correct? Toll's River.
They did stay outside of the river project with that project. So from a regulatory standpoint, they're
So it's not going to, that wouldn't affect the river, or the headwaters, I should say.
Well, they're, well, they're redirecting the surface water into the same watershed, which is what we want them to do. We don't want them to direct it to a different watershed.
No, okay, so where Mother Nature put it originally is where it's going now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Mr. Woods.
Okay, just for the record, I'd like to be clear that Frank and I are very good friends. We've been friends for quite a while. And I've been in Frank's basement. I've been very friendly with Frank for at least 15 years or more. He's never had water in his basement. He's never mentioned water in his basement to me. Now this has ever come up, and me and Frank talk about everything under the sun. He never once has ever said that there's been water in his basement. I've been in his basement, it's always been dry. You know, you take 21 acres of trees, forests, and just cut them down. The water's going somewhere, you know, I'm not an expert on water or or the environment, but that water is not being sucked up by trees anymore. The water goes somewhere. You know, I don't know what the answer is. But obviously, you know, Frank has been impacted by this solar parade. You know, just the dirt into his swimming pool, into his home, in the water and in the basement. These, these things never would have occurred if the solar farm didn't go in. I don't have any problems with the way that the, the solar company has presented themselves to us and the work they've done. You know, they're professionals at what they do. There was a big dust issue, you know, and I went down there one day and I talked to Mr. Warren. You know, and he said to me, you know, he said, well, look, the wind's blowing, so the dust is going that way. Well, that was today, you know, that day, but you know where that dust was going to another neighborhood? Because that goes up into the air and it's got to come down somewhere. It's coming down on other people's property. So, you know, you can't control Mother Nature, but I don't think any of these circumstances that Frank is going through would be happening if the solar farm didn't go in. So I mean, he's just one person that is the only abbot to the, um, array. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm hopeful that, you know, the solar company takes good care of Mr. Christopher.
And I would just clarify that. I did actually have water in the basement at one point, but it came in through the window. You know, it didn't come through the floor, so, you know, we, we talked about that in the
Mr. Ferry?
Yes, uh, two, two, one's a question, one's a that the drainage system is still under design, construction is almost complete, that's going to change the dynamics of receiving
Let's hope.
rains, yes, right, so it's still going to be determined of the properties, maybe.
Understood.
The second point of the question is, is what where we would be as a Stormwater Committee?
I mean, you, you guys kind of regulate, you know, the listen, water, you know, and again, water is on the surface and below the surface.
Right.
You know, I'm not an engineer. I mean, I'm looking at common sense, no problem.
That said, that's all. Elicit would be a question whether it's designed correctly enough.
Correct, but you, you agree that illicit water also impacts the water table and the groundwater, not just the surface water?
Potentially.
I mean, I, I look at it from a common sense perspective that I think this affected both the surface water and the groundwater. The groundwater, the surface water seems to be somewhat under control now that we have the swale. Retention pond's been, you know, redesigned multiple times. That seems to be getting better, but you know, basically that water is percolating into the ground. It's now concentrated in that area. All the trees, nation and whatnot's gone. It's got to go somewhere.
That's, and that's industry standard. That's stay wide as much water going back into the groundwater.
So the way that the plans were presented and designed to us, the town is always, we hope they might want to get
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
The one in the right, so they did all the calculations and determined if you take this cover away, this street cover away, and you turn it to solar panels, then you know, the outcome is going to be that they're not going to discharge more water or less water, right?
And I agree with that, but the water's going somewhere, and you know, I'm seeing it in my basement. You know, and how, how can the Stormwater Committee help me and, you know?
I think it's, now I think it's between, I think it's between Mr. Christopher Lee and the
Clearway. Does anybody else have a comment? My first thought when I saw these pictures was the water looks rusty to me. It looks like old
That's sawdust from my basement workshop.
Red?
It's wet.
Yeah. You can tell it's sawdust.
I see brown sawdust.
Yes.
That's red cedar.
You see the shavings with it too.
There's also, if you notice, one of the pictures of a crack that's in the foundation, and that's another spot where
I see cracks in the floor. Okay. Getting, so to address what, uh, Mr. Cruz, if you'd also come up to the podium, please. To address what Mr. Cruz said earlier, and what has been said here and what has been reported in the past, we're aware of the dust problem. We know that they've attempted to take care of the dust problem. And if there's dirt, dust, whatever, it'll be cleaned up again before they leave, the, the final, I'll call it cleanup, for lack of a better word, if there is dust.
Yeah, we're making those arrangements right.
Oh. Behind us, that's not stormwater. Excuse me. As far as where the water's going, what the design was, all that, I know Mr. Pillin went over that whole thing and did the math calculations because he was an engineer, is an engineer. If he had any concerns at all about the displacement of the water when the trees were cut and the land was excavated, it would have been brought up. And I haven't read through every note he's made, but I know we have extensive files that I hear on Clearway. Relative to water going in the basement or water running across Mr. Christopher Lee's land, Mr. Pillin looked into it and said it was not. I don't think we can go any further unless there is proof from you, from an engineer or someone comparable with the credentials that Mr. Pillin has that could say that was the case. And if you come up with that, quite frankly, it's still not a stormwater issue. It was something you deal with Clearway on as a separate entity, but I agree with what Mrs. Caldonia said. I know how thoroughly those plans were reviewed. I don't know how many times I had gone up there with Mr. Pillin because he wanted to point out certain things. If there were things that he wanted changed before he got in touch with Clearway, he'd say, I want you to take a ride up there because I want to explain. I want you to see what I'm talking about. I want you to understand because if you understand and agree with me, I'm going to go to Clearway and say, hey, you need to do this or you need to change that. I can only go on the experience I had over the period of time that we had gone up there. My last visit up there was with Mr. Ferry after one of the last monsoons we had. And I took a couple of quick pictures because I was totally surprised. I expected to find water lying around. This was the same day. The sun came out at 11:00 AM that day. I went down Tremont Street because I wanted to check along Middle Street where Mr. Evangelos was going to clear some land and had contacted us. And it truly wasn't stormwater, but I wanted to see what was going on. It also gave me an opportunity to check the wall on Tremont that abuts the solar farm that's being constructed through the back. And then I went to Brook Street where I met up with Mr. Ferry. And we looked around there and then we went to Clearway, so probably within two hours of the rain stopping and the sun coming out, I know we were there afternoon time. The areas we went to, which would have been the part that, that I would say backs up to your property, because that's the only place we went to.
You know what the date, you know what day that was?
I'd have to look and, and see, but anyhow, I was surprised at how dry everything was. As a matter of fact, I think I mentioned at one of our meetings, there's a big concrete pipe that sticks out of the ground and it's got slots cut in it. And I said to Tom, look at that. Wow, that drained fast. Because obviously the, the water, the rain came down, the water rose and stuck in one of the little rectangular slits where some pieces of wood shavings that ground up, the stuff you use to hold the land. So it was clear that the water had risen up, carried some of that stuff, but it drained so quickly it stuck to the side of the the opening, okay? And, uh, Mr. Ferry was explaining to me, because those, those pipes or that pipe that we saw is different from what they have at Brook Street as far as the, the pipes in the basins, remember those, the black ones? So anyhow, I think at this point in time, the ball is in your court. I don't see this as a stormwater issue. I don't see it as a town issue. There is no evidence that's been presented, I mean, hard, fast that says what they have done has created the problem. that says what they have done has created the problems you're describing. And all I can go by is the statements that Mr. Pilling made when he served on this committee and said he did not find evidence of that. So.
Understood.
Okay.
Where do you think that water drains so fast to?
I'm not gonna address that. I've just said what I've said.
The basin he's talking about is the exact opposite side of the solar facility, and that's the place where I said we might install one more pipe. Otherwise, the basins are done. They've been functioning really well. Bob made us redesign them twice. And it's good that he did, because they work properly as a result of that. So I appreciate that.
Those would have been some of the visits that I made with him, because, um, quite frankly, that's not the first time he said to me, we need to go look at a solar farm because of this, that, or the other. And so sometimes, uh, Tom was with us, sometimes it was just Todd, uh, saying to me, hey, I want these changes made. I want you to understand them, because I'm gonna be speaking for the stormwater committee. I guess when he talked to you and said, will we want this changed? All right, so without a lot of plans and diagrams and engineering stuff, I can only tell you what happened when I was physically present and he explained it to me. And I said, go ahead. So, Mr. Cruz, um, we're gonna put you on the next, uh, agenda in November. One of these is gonna be a final report. So, when you tell us everything is whatever, and in the meantime, uh, we will have, uh, a date to do a site visit which you described, whether it's next week or whatever date, and I will send that out to every, uh, the full committee and any town officials that may be interested, uh, and just let them know that, uh, we're gonna have a site visit and that I'm just gonna tell them, it's gonna be live, don't touch anything, don't go there alone, don't go without contacting, uh, Mr. Cruz, consider it dangerous. And so I'll leave it at that. Okay, does anyone else have anything, uh, from the committee? We're all set? Okay, so this will be on the agenda for the November meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Frank.
And I'm gonna give you all these pictures so that you will have them, uh, because we have to list what documents were available at the meeting. So, I'll give you that when I give the minutes back. Next agenda item. Would somebody make a motion, we take agenda item five A, Brook Street Solar out of Ottawa, please?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second A discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hafiz, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
Okay. So, just to bring everybody up to speed. We had contacted Weston and Sampson relative to engineering services to look at Brook Street to try to determine what has to be done relative to the basin's not draining. So, I have a proposal here that just came in. It's dated October seventeen. It's from Jim Ridden, who is the engineer assigned to Titan. He will be involved with us. Um, and I guess depending upon which board needs assistance from Weston and Sampson, it may not be, uh, Jim Ridden. It could be. He's the contact, but he may not actually do all the work, but he's the contact. So, scope of the work, and I'm not gonna read all of this, because it goes on and on. Scope of the work, task one, review of existing design and approval documentation. Task two, stormwater basin field investigation. This one has an option in that he budgeted it in his estimate if he has to get an excavator, uh, backhoe or something in there. The, uh, Grasshopper already has their own excavator, and, uh, so that is not part of, uh, the total. So that's, he built it six thousand dollars, so that won't apply, because Grasshopper will take care of hiring their own person to do whatever has to be done with an excavator. And as, and as part of task two, once the field work's been completed, there will be a memorandum summarizing the results of the field work, including Weston and Sampson's opinion on whether the system is functioning properly and recommendations for repairs and upgrades if needed. Task three, meetings, they have budgeted meetings to discuss findings, answer questions, whatever else comes up, uh, relative to that. The, uh, the, the schedule is something that Mr. Hafiz and I discussed earlier today. He's hoping, and, and I sent an email to this effect to Jim Ridden, hoping that the timeframe can be either, uh, compressed or otherwise shortened, simply because based on the timetable that was presented, this is gonna take us into the middle of November. And needless to say, if there is going, if there are recommendations to do repairs or do something to those basins, we could be into December and into winter, and who knows what kind of weather we're gonna have. So, I sent the email to Jim Ridden and said, is there any way to compress this or reschedule, or I don't know if this task has just been assigned to Jim, or if there are other people that can be brought in within the cost frames that have been, um, given to us. So, I'm waiting to hear back on that. The total fee that was presented was seventeen thousand, a hundred and forty dollars. So if we take the six thousand off of the backhoe, we're talking nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. I spoke to Mr. Hafiz this morning. We talked about, um, the, uh, funding needed to put in the fifty-three G account to cover this work. And, uh, so that's where we are with that. Those are, that's the next step that we plan to take. Uh, Mr. Hafiz is okay with the, what the outline that I just gave you. Uh, again, the cost thing will, uh, be less because of the six thousand, but his main concern is the timeframe. So, uh, Ahmed, if you'd like to address the committee? Go ahead.
No, thank you. That's, uh, you, you said enough about, uh, that peer reviewer, so I'm okay with everything.
Does anybody on the committee have questions about the scope of the work, what we're planning to do, what? Anything at all?
It's just the six thousand you did, I'm gonna assign.
Yes.
It comes up to eleven, eleven thousand, one hundred and forty.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Ferry. I'm looking at, I was scribbling notes when I was talking to Mr. Hafiz this morning, and I read the wrong numbers. Thank you. So it's, we're, we're, uh, uh, eleven, one forty. Yes, thank you. I'm gonna pass around a photograph, um, that, um, Mr. Hafiz sent. When Mrs. Boselait was in here, uh, a couple of meetings, she mentioned the gate. So, the gate has been installed. Uh, this is Audrey Lane, Mr. Ferry? Is this?
Audrey Lane, yes.
Formally. It'll always be Audrey Lane, you know, things don't change. Anyhow, I'm gonna pass this around. This is the gate that's been installed to prevent people from going there up the lane. When we had the site visit way back when, I remember the talk about it'll be a gate that comes in, joins in the middle that can be opened, for example, if fire trucks have to get up there. So, uh, if you just pass this around so everybody can see it.
I already seen it.
Oh, you've seen it?
It's all right.
If, if.
Yeah, you're seeing it, Tom?
I am.
Okay.
So, um, anybody have any questions about the gate or anything? Tom, was there a problem with the gate where the culvert is? The one, you know, there's that big gate thing. That one isn't locked, is it?
It's not locked, you just have to click right out.
Okay, all right, okay. So, Mrs. Boselait, you wanna come to the, uh, Grasshopper?
Oh, Grasshopper.
That was part of the discussion along, as I say, way back, because I remember the site visit, and I think it was, I think it was Jim Aggell, when we were talking about the gate, he says, why don't you have a gate that meets in the middle? So you can open this thing up, like if the fire truck had to go up the lane? Is that the area you're talking about? Or were you talking about the gate where the culvert is? Are both of them?
Okay, well, that was the gate that was on the plans that was supposed to be done
Right.
up to five years ago. The other gate that I was talking about last meeting was the culv, was the, uh, gate at the culvert.
Right.
Which it, I know, I know I happened to see, uh, Mr. Ferry close it one time. He stopped and closed it, but they're still leaving it open, and there are still people going up. I, I, you know, I don't know.
Okay, is it so light and flexible that the wind could move it?
No, not if it's clipped.
Oh, there's a clip? Okay, all right.
So it's, it's usually when I find it open, it's operated error. Because when it's open, you have to manually push it underneath the, the peakers, so it stays open.
Okay.
It's just people leaving it open. That's all it is.
Okay, so, so Ahmed, all I would say is, um, I believe the property's posted for no trespassing, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
And I would, so, uh, Ahmed, when everything is done and when you're online and everything's done and it's working properly, will there be reason other than to maybe mow the grass or do something, any reason for, for anybody employed by Grasshopper locally that would be entering that site?
Yeah, there is the, uh, operations and maintenance contractor, uh, Amerasco, they, they maintain or like, they operate all, all our sites in Massachusetts, so they might be visiting the site for some preventive maintenance or corrective maintenance, so, other than, than mowing the site, yeah, so. There might be, uh, some visits, like two visits at least a year for maintenance, and in addition to anything that comes up that requires a site visit.
Okay. Mrs. Boselait, have you noticed the gate being open recently since the last meeting?
Yes.
It's been left open?
It's been closed and open, but it's, it was open today. It was, it's people leaving. They're, they're just not getting out of their car and showing them. It's as simple as that.
Ahmed's gonna yell at Jason.
I will let him know, yeah.
So, so the key word here is lazy. Get out of the vehicle.
Not Jason necessarily.
Well, whoever, all right. So, um, Mrs. Boselait, do you have anything that you wanted to bring up about Brook Street while we're on the topic?
No, not necessarily, other than, um, the engineers that you're gonna have look at it. I mean, we all know that it's not working, so whatever they come up with, but.
Oh, it'll be public information.
Okay.
Oh, definitely Weston and Sampson, uh, very, very large engineering firm.
Okay.
Very good reputation. Have done a lot of work for the town, various departments. Excuse me. So, yes, this will be coming back, um, to the stormwater committee. Any reports of whatever will be available.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody else have anything on Brook Street that they wanna bring up or discuss? Do you have anything, Ahmed?
No, thank you.
Yes, I didn't hear a comment on the gate, you know, having the gate.
Yeah, like, so, um, the gate, if that's considered our gate, right? Like it's, am I correct? Like it's got nothing to do with the town now. It's got, it's our gate. Yes. Okay, so, uh, it's nothing to do with the solar field. That was something that they built for us.
But you can't lock it?
No.
Because it will be used as an emergency if in fact the fire department has to get up there or.
I don't think the fire department could get up there, because.
Be surprised.
Well.
They could access it.
Yeah, like, I'm just thinking the, the width of it. That's what I'm.
Well, you're thinking probably a big fire truck, but they have other equipment that would, uh, or, for example, if somebody were upstairs and got injured, bless you, and they had to, let's say evacuate them, uh, because an ambulance couldn't get up there, I'm sure they would have some kind of a something or other that they could bring them out on. I mean, you see these things on television when they're hunting for people that are lost, so.
The lane is not, the lane is not like it used to be. It's not inviting to go for a walk no more. The gate is, the gate's a gate. I don't think that's necessary.
And you can post it, no trespassing.
Yeah, we can.
You can certainly.
Private property, no trespass. We can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But could we put like, um, a zip lock on it? You know, a zip tie?
Don't.
That could be caught. It could be caught.
Check with the fire chief.
Okay.
Those gates and things like that, that would be public.
He's got a universal key anyways.
That would. But, but before I did anything, I would just check.
Okay.
That it's your gate and you're gonna post it, no trespassing, you would like to secure it, uh, does he have any suggestions or whatever? All right, because that's, that's his turf.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we wanted to tweak anything, stain anything, anything, like we can, it's ours. We can do whatever we want.
Call, and call me with any questions. We'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
And it is nice, by the way.
We have, is there anything else on Brook Street? Okay, so I think, I think, uh, we're all set then, um. Uh, Ahmed, I will get back to you. I will email you as soon as I get an answer from Jim Ridden to let you know uh, his response to my request to see if he can shorten the timetable.
Sure.
And I will check, I will check with the town accountant to find out if there is money left in the fifty-three G account that wasn't expended on the last work that was done, that could be used to help pay for the study. Okay?
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
See you tonight.
Yes.
I'm gonna go back to the order of the agenda, four A, Maris Lane Drainage Problems. Is there anything new to add to report?
I don't have anything.
Don't. I know on the west side of the house that we discussed last time, I don't know the address here.
At least.
I mean, the east side, that drainage was installed.
Just move the tape recorder over so that it's gonna pick up to help Heather.
Right here?
Yeah, that's fine.
I know the drainage on the east side that we discussed last time was installed. I was invited up there to see it before they finished backfilling it. Pretty elaborate, nice pipe. Pretty bit of stone with the filtration on top of the stones, so soil can't get down in there.
Is it working?
We, we have to test it. We gotta pray for rain.
It'll happen.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
Is this the system that she had a cost estimate of five thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. So it's all in, now you're waiting for rain?
Yes.
Okay. Heather, this will be on the next agenda for an update? I want to test it. I don't want everybody to pray for rain. You've had enough. Okay, um, four eighty-five Tremont Street, um, this is land disturbance endangered species update. Have we heard anything?
Yeah, yeah. The, Mr. Alex has been in communication with, uh, Natural Heritage and myself, um, a few times a week, he's updating us. Um, he hired a wetland scientist. He is applying to Natural Heritage, um, so that they can review the whole thing. Natural Heritage told him he doesn't need a cert, actual survey, um, but he does need a wetland delineation and a sketch and a letter report. So, that's where that's at right now.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda for November also for an update.
Okay.
I know that, that hasn't been any work over there. Everything's been quiet. Agenda item four C, designate committee signatories. This is something that we do on an annual basis. And in the past, you have voted, uh, that the signatories to this committee are Tom and me. And so if that's acceptable, we continue. I need a motion to.
A motion that Tom Ferry and Nancy Gulat be designated as signatory.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All I'll say is, Tom and I usually things, assign both things like letters or whatever, however. If I submit something where I'm getting reimbursed for photographs or stuff, I just sign it as the person requesting, and Tom signs for. I just sign it as the person requesting and Tom signs for approval by the department. And I will be submitting something, because the other thing that we're required to do is to tell them at a time. I will be submitting a reimbursement for postage stamps and photographs. Photographs are for the calendar that's in the works, $14.96, so that, just so that you know. Obviously, we don't spend much money, and in the past, it's been reimbursements for certified mailings, those are expensive. But anyhow, okay, so I'm gonna call the vote for Mr. Ferry and me being signatories, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Vote unanimous. So I'll get the form, we'll sign it and get it to the town accountant. Okay, 4D Weston and Sampson Engineering Projects. We've covered the active project that we talked about, which is Brook Street. I've gotta talk to Mr. Mullen because we're going to need a review of Clearway, which we talked about earlier today. Whether it's the final review or the whatever, but it needs to be looked at by an engineer. And then, we have not had regular inspections since Mr. Pilling left on Tremont and Middle Streets. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Mullen about also getting something lined up out there. Again, we have extensive records up to the point of Mr. Pilling leaving. I took the, I took some records for Brook Street, which I will return to Liz. And I also had some for Clearway. So the records are downstairs, so that if we get engineers, there's something for them to review, Mr. Ferry.
Rujos project wrapping up, a question list must be created by.
That's part of what I think the engineers are gonna have to do.
Our engineer?
The, the person we hire.
Great, I'm just trying to add that to the list.
Yes, yes.
Because that'll happen sooner than the others.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll get an email out to Mike Mullen today. He had asked me if we need to have a stormwater agent. And I said, at this point, I don't know what to tell you. But having looked at the records that I needed, I'm doing research on Clearway also. Not related to any of the physical part of it, it relates to a pilot agree- pilot agreements. But I had to go through all the stuff that we had. Mr. Pilling made extensive notes. He also wrote a lot of reports. So when they come to review Brook Street, there's a lot of stuff they have to go through plus. And there are documents in there from other boards, like planning and that. So there's gonna be a lot of material they've got to review when they look at Brook Street. And there's, they're gonna have to do a lot of looking to see, I'll call it the history of Clearway. Not that we've had the kind of problems at Clearway that we've had on Brook Street. But definitely will do something. From what I read, I came away thinking that we are in need of somebody as a stormwater agent who is qualified to go out and do the kind of inspections Mr. Pilling did. I don't think we have anybody on staff that can do that. Obviously, you're watching stuff for us from a conservation standpoint. I am not qualified to go out and look at stormwater construction and all that other good stuff. And as I say, my experience on site has been when Mr. Pilling would say to me, hey, this is a situation. I'm gonna make a recommendation before I do it, I want you to come out, I want to explain it to you, I want you to ask questions, I want you to understand. Because I'm gonna need you to say, go ahead and do it, which happened a number of times. But anyhow, I, I'm going to get past that info on to Mike and say, yes, we definitely need.
How about the hiring freeze?
Something. Not my problem.
Yeah, it was a position we originally had anyway.
Well, not only that, the question to me was, do we need a stormwater agent? And I said at the, at the time, I said, I don't really know. But now that I've gone into it and seen what I've seen, I'm thinking, nobody's doing this. Somebody needs to do this.
I agree.
You, you never know when you're gonna end up in litigation over something. And I'm not referring to any of our current forms. What I know is, what saves you, what is your defense, is that you've got the records and the documentation and you've got everything you need. And I'll just base that on the court case that we ended up in Superior Court in Fall River over the pilot agreement. The documentation was there, absolutely. Not as extensive, obviously, as if you were dealing with stormwater runoff, different situation. But if we didn't have the kind of documentation we had, it would have taken a little bit longer. I think we'd have prevailed. But I think because of what we had, it was, our attorney did not have to start from day one. He was told, this is what it is, this is our position, we have right, okay? So, so anyhow, I will, I will speak to Mike about engineering services for Clearway.
Is this something we need to vote on?
At this point in time, I'm gonna ask for a, I'm gonna ask for a combination, motion. Let me just finish this. Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to have me contact Mr. Mullen relative to engineering services for Clearway and also for Blue Wave, which is on Tremont and Middle Streets. One will be, Clearway, I think will be final. The other one, this is gonna be interim, because we got a big gap between when Mr. Pilling left and what we have. So, so the motion will be to instruct me to contact Mr. Mullen and request engineering services for Clearway Solar, Blue Wave Solar, and to fill the position of stormwater agent for the Stormwater Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
The only question I have is, do we need a job description?
That's always been the bugaboo with a stormwater agent. But having seen what I've seen and having known what was put together before, and quite frankly, having a description of what he did, that he wrote, I'm sure we can come up with one. And the need, the need for it, the need for it on a part-time basis. And I am talking part-time basis, and I'm not talking combination jobs or anything else. I'm talking stormwater agent to do this kind of follow-up. Any comments or anything else? This will be on the agenda update on, this one will be update on engineering services and stormwater agent position. And we'll, we'll have that on for November. So I can give you some information. I get information ahead of time, I'll send it out to you. But since we're talking about it now, it'll be an agenda item, so the public will know what's happening with that. So I'm gonna call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the vote's unanimous. The next one is Agenda Item 5C, Blue Wave Solar Tremont and Middle Street Streets Project. Do we have anything on that? Has anybody been up there since the last time, which was?
No.
I drive by there.
We do get the weekly, get the inspections, the project control inspection reports.
They get a text.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Ask them to copy me on that, because I'm not getting Blue Wave.
They go on the count of it.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, every time I drive by there, I notice when we were up there, they would dig in that, I'll call it a ditch, it's probably a basin, that was on the south side of Tremont Street. And it ran along the outside of the solar panels. And they were in the process of digging it then. It's all, in no time at all, it was all filled with stone.
Stone, yeah.
Stuff and, is that a basin or is that a drainage ditch, Tom?
Yes.
I think it's swale and, yeah.
So.
Swale and ditch.
You saw the, the pit they had, it was quite wider, the stone, that berm is on top, pretty much the center of that stone.
Yeah.
So the water's made to hit that berm and filtration under it, to slow down the speed.
Right. So what's.
How, how do we answer this? So is it.
Is it a swale? Is it a basin? Is it a combination? Don't say yes.
I, I, I would say so, because you're, you're holding back the water, you're infiltrating under the ground, you're detaining the flow. So you're hitting all those points.
Do you get all that, Heather? I think what we're talking about is a combination, well, and basin. Don't worry about describing it all.
I'll help you with that.
Okay, so obviously, this one will be on the agenda for next month. Agent Report 6A Conservation Commission Updates, 508 Customs and Zero Horton Street Map 10 Lot 53.
508 Customs, doing, there's a little communication going back and forth between myself and the engineering firm who, when they, they sent me a draft plan, basically saying they didn't think they needed to file a notice of intent. And I responded and explained to them that because the work is within 100 feet of a wetland, even though the wetland's off-site, this jurisdictional area on the site and they're resurfacing the area. Therefore, they need to meet stormwater management as far as DEP goes. So we're going back and forth a little bit. We still don't have compliance on that one. Zero Horton, Oliviera.
What do you mean by compliance? Like they're not doing what you're asking them?
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's what you mean.
Compliance would be, you know, submitting an approvable plan that the commission would actually look at and vote on.
Yeah, yeah.
You got a meeting tomorrow night, right?
Yeah.
They on your agenda for tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other one would be Zero Horton, Oliviera. We are coming to some sort of compliance with them. They submitted, they hired a wetland scientist, submitted a restoration plan. Zenith Engineers and Consultants did the restoration plan. However, I do know that they're in the middle of trying to figure out if it's gonna be feasible for them to farm there and just complete the restoration. So we should know soon.
Okay. So we'll put that on for next month too, to get an update on what's happening.
Yeah.
Can I just ask?
Yes, go ahead.
About that 508 Customs, you have something they want, you want them to do, but they're not doing it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're being.
Got to print after the fact.
They're being a little reluctant to do the right thing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we want them to file after the fact permit for some work that was done and we want them to.
But the owner's complaining to people. That's all I'm saying, right? And it's getting back to me, right? So, you know, I, I can tell that they're not doing the right thing and they never have from day one, so. Right. Okay, but now I know how to respond when they call me again.
That's good, Katie.
Yeah. I gotta tell them, get in line.
I inserted anticipated items number seven, so I just noticed correspondence, there's two eights down there, so make correspondence number nine. And when we do the, when you do the part where I brought up Mr. Chris Foolies, I said Agenda Item 8 Out of Order, make that number nine, just to correct it and match the agenda. Okay? So seven will be anticipated items, eight is public input, and nine is correspondence, okay? Just to clarify that. Obviously, I inserted that and got interrupted. Unanticipated items, I'm just mentioning this because I haven't done anything about it, but I'm gonna have to do something about it. We're gonna have to do something about it. Forest Hills and Aba Crest. You know I've been involved with the Tonkin Conservation Commission on Forest Hills. And I had said that Tonkin Concom put that whole thing on hold and told their attorney, get straightened out in Dyton. And then, when you get straightened out in Dyton, you can come back to us. And we know that they're, our planning board denied their request, so they're working on it, whatever. And Aba Crest is a 40B that has been around for a long time and seems to be moving ahead. And every time I drive up Tremont Street and look at all that disturbance, same attorney as Forest Hills has told me, doesn't apply, we're a 40B. Well, I have correspondence from the EPA that says no one is exempt. And it goes on to refer to the fines that are contained in the permit, our permit, and about how no board has the authority to override the Clean Water Act and so forth, so on. I'm bringing this up now because this is going to be an agenda item on the November agenda. And it will be Forest Hills and Aba Crest. And I'm going to contact the attorney and invite him to come to the meeting. Because I want it on record that this committee did not sit back and not take action when the EPA is saying enforce the permit conditions or the town is subject to fine. So I'm gonna leave it at that. I will contact the attorney, or now there's another one involved, the one from Strawberry Fields, and invite him to the meeting and tell him why. And they can come in and tell us that doesn't apply. And I will have the information from the EPA. My concern is that, I have raised this issue before with Strawberry Fields. The zoning board did allow us to speak and submit written documentation, which was part of what has gone to the appeal. However, we're the committee responsible for enforcing the conditions of that permit. And if the EPA takes, takes action against this town, it's not gonna be, because we didn't attempt to enforce the conditions of the permit. So I want every board and commission to understand, either we get full cooperation, but if we're told to butt out, it's at the peril of the town. Period. So anyhow, that'll be under, we're gonna put that one under Committee Business, Heather, for the November agenda, okay? And I may change the wording a little bit. We've already done correspondence number nine. Oh, public input, we don't have any public here, but I went to the open house at Crystal Plymouth and I went to Graphic Design Department. And I am very happy with what I've seen so far of the calendar, they had nine months done. Unfortunately, Mr. Woods, the whale is not gonna be in it, because they can't make it clear enough so that you can see it's a whale. It looks like a white blob in the river. But check your pictures and send me more pictures, because if this thing works, I think this.
They got a shark picture.
A shark.
That was in the Tonkin River.
Anyhow, I saw a draft, it was nine months, we moved some things around and it was really looking good. Guess that man wanted to go downstairs. Anyhow, I am going to pass around, I call it, I'm gonna give you the old one, which is in various colors. And one of the things we said was, some of this light print just didn't work. So I took in the old, I took the old one to them. This is a draft of, I call it the green, the green one. Now, needless to say, I had my red pen out, but this is a draft that the kids put together, it's not the final edition. So all my red pen stuff is, will, will be corrected. But I want you to look at the two of them. There has been minor changes. They added a picture here. Other than Mr. Ferry, I want somebody to tell. There has been minor changes, uh, they added a picture here, other than Mr. Ferry, I want somebody to tell me what that's a picture of. You're eliminating, but anyhow, um. It's looking very good, as far as the calendar goes, um, I met the teacher who handles these projects. And, you know, the students have a week in the, in the, I'll call it the shop, and then a week back in the classrooms, so the kids were back, would do back Monday of this week. And she was hoping they could finish the last three months of the calendar and put together a sample for me. But, um, the pictures I saw, the color was, they, somehow they enhanced some of the color, uh, color was brilliant, uh, beautiful pictures. There's a sunrise and a sunset in there, that's just, wow, and, um. Uh, there's the Taunton River, uh, not your Taunton River, your Taunton River, Lisa. Um, Broad Cove Nature Trail, I get a, a lot of them are my pictures, because quite frankly, most of the pictures that came in, I had to get out of my own thing. I submitted twenty-one pictures, so they could come up with, uh, twelve, thirteen with the front cover, so anyhow. I think, I think you're going to be pleased with it, and, uh, as soon as I get it, uh, I may just let you know, hey, I've got it, we don't have to wait for a meeting, but I want you to just quickly look at it. Uh, so that we can get this thing done in time for, uh, Lights On. I told you, I think I told you at the last meeting, the brochures, I mean, three thousand brochures will cost us a hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have fifteen hundred dollars set aside from the previous year's budget, uh, which we would have used to buy calendars and that, so, um. We've got thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars, is that correct, Mass? To, uh, use for calendars, and they're going to give me a cost per calendar, and that will determine how many we buy, we usually get five hundred when we do national parks. But we'll wait and see what the cost is at BP, so, um. I felt very good after I saw what, what the kids had done, and, uh. Uh, that was, that was really good, does anybody else have anything under public import they want to bring up, or unanticipated items? Okay, uh, next item is ten, approved minutes for September twentieth, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September twentieth meeting?
Motion to approve minutes of September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, just whatever, motion carries unanimously, going to assign this, Mr. Ferry, you can start too. Uh, before we adjourn, just, is there anything else that anyone is aware of that they think we need to bring up, that maybe something out there that. Or something we should be aware of that could be coming? Oh, I, I just want to mention this. I picked this up in the vestibule of Town Hall, this is put out by the EPA. It's a contractor's guide to stormwater, I had not seen this before. And I went through it quickly, and I'm going to go online and see, uh. The only thing I saw quickly is, they talk about disturbance of an acre of land. But I don't know if we're going to do anything about changing that, but this looked like a good item to have as a handout. I don't know where this came from.
Program, probably empty.
Um. How to get a stormwater permit, um, all I can tell you is, it's an EPA publication. Uh, I know we can use any of their stuff, that's online. Um, but I'm going to look into this, um, I have the info for you, so. Anything else, hearing nothing, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
We're done, it's two twenty. One.
Wow, record time.
Okay, Tom, can you save that, or whatever you do with it?
Yeah, Tom. Amen. We have no whale pictures. Find a good one later. Big pressure chart.
We added a meeting. And meeting for our.
Uh, Heather, if you take the picture of that gate.